Let's call this meeting to order. This is a regular city council meeting that's being held Thursday, March 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at Seymour City Hall, 301 North Washington, Seymour, Texas. All notices have been duly posted in accordance and conformance with the government code of the state of Texas, Section 551 dot zero seven two C. The city of Seymour attempts to make its meetings accessible to all its citizens. If you have need of auxiliary aids, please notify the city secretary at nine four zero eight eight nine three one four eight, at least forty-eight hours in advance. The agenda is also posted on the city's website at cityofseamore.org with the following agenda to be considered. First of all, let's have a roll call. The council members, Lan Nguyen.
Here.
Councilman Glass is absent. Councilman Skylar Hendricks.
Here.
Council Lady Debbie Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Billy Hendricks.
Here.
Okay, we definitely have a quorum here. Let's all stand and say the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the prayer. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Brazier, will you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Please bow our head. Our most graciously heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together for our freedom and the opportunity just to meet. We just pray that you be with our city council, those that are present and those that are watching at home. You please just bless us, watch over us, bless us with wisdom and knowledge and the ability to communicate, to work together, to collaborate as one, so that we can make our community better, safer, and just improve the overall quality of life of every citizen. So just guide us and protect us, Lord, and we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I didn't be seated. I've just got to, I'll just made a little list of a few things I wanted to mention. Want to mention the electric department last Friday, they had some heavy, really sustained winds and I drove around just a little bit and saw them out most of the day. They got power back on, I got a couple of calls from citizens and one of the citizens, the electric department, the entire electric department was behind their house and didn't realize it. So they were happy about that. Got cleanup week coming April 7th through the 13th. This is grass clippings, limbs, vegetation for the most part. Speaking of grass clippings, we're making an effort to try and educate folks, try not blow your grass clippings and any kind of vegetation out in the road. It has an adverse effect on the storm drains, motorcycle traffic, it's hazardous, and it's kind of unsightly as well. So we are trying to get that out there. We're making good progress on dilapidated structures. There's another one going down on North Arkansas as we speak. Really appreciate the citizens of Seymour, appreciate the council getting behind that, and we're really making good progress, heard a lot of good comments through the community on that. Also want to mention that our financial reports are almost completely up to date. We hope within less than thirty days will be current. So I'm just very happy and joyful about that. We just are striving to provide first-class service to our citizens and that's, that's really what our goal up here. We're all servants and we want to do our best for our community. If any of the council members would like to comment on anything, feel free to do so. If not, Dr. Brazier, you need to recognize some folks here today.
It'd be an honor and privilege this evening to recognize two outstanding CFC Moore employees from the water department. We would like to recognize, of course, Jake Donnell and Joseph Tropanion for something special, but before I talk about that, I don't know if any of y'all saw the newspaper article, we were just very, very proud of the creativity and the innovation of our water department under the leadership of Chase Hoyt, but Mr. Donnell had a tremendous amount of work and influence on implementing this new diamond maps system. And so I really encourage people to read the newspaper, it's really, really impressive what they're doing, and again, just their innovation and creativity, they're just a great team of individuals that work together and they're dedicated and they're truly here to make a difference and make our community better. And if you see them behind the scenes and all the hard work and the discipline with what they put into ensuring that when you turn your faucet at home, you get good, clean, fresh water. And so we've truly are blessed to have a great team that works for us each day, but they actually took it another step further. They went yesterday and they both took their wastewater license. Jake Donnell got his Class C wastewater license and Joseph got his Class D. And, but also I think that Joseph, I just got to mention too, he's in the Texas National Guard and he's fixing to get deployed to the border to serve the great state of Texas down the border, keeping us all safe as well. So these guys are multifaceted, multi-talented, and just wonderful people, but tonight, on behalf of our mayor and our city council, we just want to say thank you to Joseph and Jake for your hard work and for going above and beyond and getting that wastewater license, which takes a lot of work, a lot of effort, and a lot of time to make that happen, but that does give them just additional benefits criteria to continue to serve our community. So at this time, if Joseph and Jake, if y'all would please come forward, we present you with this, what I call the Water Resource Innovator Award on behalf of our mayor and
I also wanted to, I didn't recognize Sheriff White here tonight, appreciate you coming in and being with us. Let's see here, we did our presentation, we've got a, let's see here, what about public hearing, we got, what about citizens' comments, that's what I'm looking for. No citizens' comments tonight, okay. Let's go to city administrator reports.
All right, just real quick, on our personnel report, we actually are fully staffed, we did hire Alicia Rutledge, she'll be training now as a front desk clerk, and we are going to cross-training her to assist in some levels in the business office as well as assisting our city secretary with some of the judicial, financial reports that has to be done, but we had a, I just want y'all to know that we had some really, really good applicants, really good applicants, and so it was a very difficult decision, but we feel like that we got a great individual that's going to fit well with our culture here at City Hall, will be an asset here at the City Hall. And so anyway, Alicia won't start until, I think, the first of April, she's certainly going to give a two-week notice to her current employer, so if, when you see Alicia, please make her feel welcome. At Salt Fork, we're up to a hundred and fourteen members, and of course, in your packet, the police continue to work hard for our citizens, did a great job. On your finance report, just wanted to point out that for the fiscal year, we're about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand to the good in our revenue, so that's really looking good as we anticipated. And then, Lauren, do you want to speak anything on dilapidated properties or we want to wait?
On page sixteen in your packet is your dilapidated properties report. We originally started with eight properties back in October one, we have, two of those properties have been completed, one was conveyance to the city and the city tore it down and the other was a property owner. So I feel like we're making progress on those, the other green ones will have their public hearings here in just a minute, but that's your report. And at the bottom of that, we have, if you have a question about those, what we call dead properties, essentially those properties can't move without the CAD going on the back taxes role and clearing those titles, so we're just going to let that process go and then we'll deal with them after they come off of the appraisal district.
Are they going to move on, do you think they'll move on those or you?
I know that the first three properties in that list, they have a lot of red tape tied to them, there was a criminal activity on those, so I don't see those moving anytime quickly. The two oh three West Custer and the five fifteen East McLean are supposed to be in action pretty quickly.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so we're through with city administrator reports as we're moving to.
Yes, sir.
Public hearings. Okay, we're going to conduct public hearings, I guess we just go down each one of these and see if anyone would like to comment on each one?
So our, just so everyone knows, because y'all are here all for kind of the same reason, public hearings are set so that if anybody on the public wants to speak about these items that are listed, they can, but they're also listed under action items. So you can speak during the public hearing if you want, but the item will come up for you if you were, if this property is yours and you want to speak directly on it, there is an action item related to it. So you can wait for the public comment section to be done, and then you will have the opportunity to speak directly on your property during action items.
Okay, so do we just need to list these, go through each one? Got you, okay. All right, we'll just go through these, there's a number of them, ten I think. One A concerning dilapidated structure at two eleven South Tackett. Concerning B, one B, concerning dilapidated structure at eight oh eight North Donald. Concerning dilapidated structure at four oh one North Arkansas. Concerning dilapidated structure at three oh one North Donald. One at a time, if you will, just, you're Ed, aren't you? Yes, okay, yeah, just, okay. Go right ahead. You're on, you're on.
Or I can take six months to tear it down, or allow it six months, and then y'all are going to build me no matter what. I have no faith in our city manager. I said just lack of the experience I've had in the past, and I said then, then I noticed on this, I went to reading it later today that, like I said, they talking about the wood chips, I mean the paint chips and stuff, well, there's no paint on the house, it's all siding and aluminum, but anyhow, I would like to move my house to Red Springs. I'd rather do it when I retire, because really, I, like everybody else in this town, I ain't got the money. And then y'all going to turn around and charge me more than the property's even worth to tear it down. I says, I don't, I, I plan on coming this weekend and starting work on it. It needs a new roof, yes. The rest of the house is okay, I don't have a problem pulling all the trees out around the house that's grown, I understand, right now don't look grown up, but when spring hits and they're all bloomed out, yes, it's grown up, I guess. There's no broke windows or broke out windows in it, there are some screens missing because Seymour has a vandal problem. Like I says, people have broken into the house, I have gone back and boarded it up and stuff after I found it. I would, I'd, I'd like to be able to do something before I get billed for doing so on it, and like I says, Seymour's dying and it's like everybody's in a hurry to kill it faster by putting heavy burdens on the people that have property here. Part of the reason I, I'm not here is because Seymour failed, and I have special needs kid that needed help that they promised here and didn't get, which is a different subject. And if this continues like it. And if this continues like it's going, I planned on later maybe retiring here like everybody else in the family. I really consider going back out to Red Springs, not in town. But this keeps going like it is, there's no point for me to even be in Baylor County. I said, I've read this, like I said, some of this stuff is true. The roof does need a pan, but, uh, broke out windows, there's not broke out windows, there's busted windows where they broke the latches to get into the house and I've gone in there and boarded where it can't be, uh, I've nailed boards inside the house holding the windows down where they can't be opened. And I said, it's just, I don't know, I wasn't, I'm not prepared to be here tonight. I've drove a lot today, just, it, just different things. And if y'all give me time, I'll get rid of the house, but I'm not gonna pay ten thousand dollars for y'all to tear it down. I still have some of my grandfather's stuff in there. I have some of my furniture and stuff in there. And they're saying, well, it's all gonna rot, we've, the inside is not getting rotted, it's just the roof leaking a bit, but it's not into where I got everything in the house. And to do it correctly, the roof has to be completely taken off. And when I'm moving, I'm gonna have to take the roof off anyhow. And then to put a new roof on it and then take it back off to move it in a couple of years, it's like a lot of waste of money. And you know, it's just, it's kind of like y'all just don't want me here. Cause I, I speak my opinion.
That's what it's for.
And, uh, I said, I know a couple y'all up here and I do have respect for some of y'all. Couple y'all I just don't know. And, uh, I said, I just think, uh, I, some of this stuff on some of it, you know, if they had sent me, hey, can we talk before they go in there, maybe that would have solved a lot of the discrepancy issues, you know, if they, but I get to saying that y'all are gonna condemn my house. Nobody here's a licensed or registered code enforcement in town, which if I'm understanding correctly, they're supposed to be before they do condemn houses. Says, I know it needs work. I plan on doing the work, but I just want to have it out in Red Springs. I have, we got land out in Red Spring, own it clear, no problem, got plenty of room for it. I just, uh, the house is neat inside. It's an old house, nineteen twenty. And I like the house, I just want to move it. But I, the funds are, especially with my disabled son, the funds are just not there. At least not right now. I'm hoping by the time I retire, I can take some of my, uh, retirement and borrow against it to go have all this done. That was my game plan. And now y'all telling me I gotta rush everything up and as long as I'm working, I can't borrow against my IRA or anything.
I think we've gone, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I think we're at three minutes, so we, we'll start next time. Uh, thank you, Mr. Flake. It'll come back up again before the meeting's over. All right, thank you. Uh, I do, I do want to comment, um, you know, want to take up for Dr. Brazer a little bit. Dr. Brazer does a good job for us and, uh, he's a good guy, good man. We're not always gonna see eye to eye on every, every topic. We're just not, uh, for various reasons. Let's continue on. That was four oh one. Oh, I'm sorry. Did anyone else want to speak on this topic or are we gonna move on to the next house? Okay. Oh, a different one. Okay. Uh, just come on up when you, we get to there. Okay, we got down to three oh one North Donald. Discuss, consider, take action. No, 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 excuse me. I'm sorry. Uh, we're at three oh one North, two oh eight North Tackett. Three oh one North Arkansas. Six oh one South Washington. Oh, okay. That's Mr. Holmes. I know who he is. Tell us who you are and
Hello, I'm C.T. Holmes.
Okay.
Uh, I own the property six oh one South Washington. Uh, as most of you know, I have, uh, had a couple of major spinal surgeries in the last few years. I've had plans for the property, but I haven't been able to physically do anything, but I think now I'm able to do that. My original plans were just to get rid of the structure on the property and keep the property for my own personal use. But in the last few months, I have had several individuals approach me and ask me if I would like to sell the property, which I never really considered, but now I'm kind of thinking, well, if I had some time, go ahead and get the outside cleaned up. Then, uh, there's still household items in the house. Uh, the roof is in terrible shape and, uh, last time I was in it, uh, there's been some ceiling collapse in there that needs to be cleaned out. Just get the interior cleaned up and ready to show to see if anybody potentially wanted to be a buyer on it. Uh, main thing, I just kind of asked for a lunch or time. I don't know what y'all's schedule is on having to act on it, but I, I would like maybe at least six months before, see if I can get some stuff done on it.
We'd address that later.
In the action item.
In the action item. Okay. All right. Thank you, uh, C.T.
It's just that distance, I think.
Eight oh one Northeast. Four oh two East Morris. Oh, come on down. How are you today? Okay, you'll tell us who you are, uh,
Kevin Johnson.
Okay, if you can
And I'm the owner of
Take that, just take it out of the stand if you can. There you go.
Hello, I'm Kevin Johnson, the owner of the property. And, uh, this was, this property was bought for my daughter at the moment, or at that moment. But she has indeed moved away for lack of resources here and, uh, well, I'm kind of lo, at a loss as to what to do with it.
Okay, it's, it's the rock structure.
Yes.
Yes, gotcha. Do you have any plans? I don't, we can discuss that in the, at the second part.
For one, my wife has been, uh, feeling a lot of pain lately. She's been, uh, in the doctor, o, often on, quite often. And it's kind of hard for me to leave her. I just don't have time to go up there and deal with it. I was thinking about turning it down myself, but I just don't have the time. The finances, like anybody else, I, around here, I guess, and just don't have the finances to do well. Could, but it really tear up, uh, aspects for anything else. Kind of at a loss, just don't know what to do. I'm renting out the other structure. And, uh, not much else to say.
I got you. Maybe, maybe at the, the second part of this, maybe we can give you some options, maybe.
I'm open to ideas. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you. And let's see, the final property is nine oh seven North Main. Anybody like to speak on that? Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, then we'll come back to these properties, uh, for too long. Anybody like, I think we've looked through these. Does anybody like to make a motion on this or?
May I make a motion? We accept the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Four zero. Okay, moving right along. We're down to action items. Uh, okay, two eleven South Tackett. I'm getting back to where I can see the properties again.
That image is gonna be on page thirty-eight.
Gotcha. Sure is.
So this property, oh, I'm sorry, do you want to read?
No, I, it's just, it's rough looking property. It's been that way for a long time.
So, uh, this is, property is owned by the Promised Land, Promised Land Properties. Uh, they've owned it for several years. The utilities have never been turned on. They're from California. The company's out of state. I should say, it doesn't matter. They're from California, they're from out of state. Um, we've had no response on this and with their letter. My op, uh, opinion is to move forward with condemnation processes with TCG. Um, and I would just move forward. I don't, I'm, I'm thinking once we go into that form of, um, notification through that company, they'll either come forward or we'll end up able to condemn it and tear it down.
Okay, so we need to make individual motions on these and
Yes.
Okay.
Do they make sure we have clear direction on, on each property so we'll know how to proceed?
Got you. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to condemn the, the, uh, property and go through the, we go through this process with the attorney in Lubbock. As I understand it, the
Yes.
the company in Lubbock.
That we would engage TCG.
Make sure we're doing all these things legally. Okay?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we move forward with the condemnation.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, it's four zero. Okay. Let's go to eight oh eight North Donald. Lauren, you've got some information on that, I think.
The property owner came in and spoke with me. Um, they are requesting six months to determine what they're gonna do with the property. Uh, they are interested in tearing it down. Um, however, they're kind of in the same predicament as everybody else trying to figure out funds and things like that. Uh, right now, this property is not causing a safety issue. We, um, explained to the property owner that they would need to ensure that the building was boarded up from vagrants and varmints. There is a small, um, now would, now don't, actually the roof is in, is in fine condition. There's, it's a place where the shingles have come up, but that's not actually come off. And so that is on page, there you are, on page forty. So we're, oh, it's written right there. Six month remediation, there, we gave them the information for the local contractors. And so we would come back in September and hopefully the property will be, uh, gone by September. If not, we'll start, uh, towards the next steps to get it complete. But it should be completely secure and boarded up in the next sixty days.
Okay, uh, would someone like to make a motion to confirm this remediation as, uh, the city secretary has explained six months to, uh, or sixty days to, uh, secure the property and six months to have it down or remediated?
Lauren, is this of that Conex in the driveway? Yeah?
It does. But it does, it's not outside of the visual, so it's not causing a, uh, what do you call it? It's not causing any traffic issues being out there on the side of the road.
I just saw, I remember last time I went by, there's like a window you know, it's, I didn't know if they were using that.
It's storage.
Storage for, okay.
Can we give them just three months?
It's up to you.
I mean, it's only six months. I mean, it's, it's been like this for how long?
Um, the, this specific property has, no, that's Tackett, sorry. This property has not had utilities turned on since two thousand and seven, so it's been vacant since two thousand and seven.
I'd like to see us just give us three months on some of these properties, because the other six months down the road, I just, I just don't see it, so.
Okay, so I would go back to the property owner in three months and see where we are in the remediation process. Call, I'd actually call him ahead of time, of course. To call him and tell him council action was to have a plan in place or remediated in three months.
I think, uh,
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I'll make a motion that we, um, notify them, the, the council, or allow to do three months for remediation. Uh, have a plan to remediate it, um, and then have it secured in like thirty days or less, not sixty. I mean, two months, that's a lot of time anyway. You could, all kinds of stuff, you could have like two months out there, especially when the heat comes, it's getting hotter and stuff, so.
Okay.
A second. Okay, we've got a motion for, uh, thirty day to secure the property and, uh, three months to do the remediation.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Four zero. Okay, that is eight oh eight. Okay, four oh one North Arkansas. There we go. This is the one. Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, that is my property. Um, I have not been able to get back as much as what I want to, to work on it. My mother's husband had cancer and he just died. So we've been helping her out, going back and forth. So I can start, can I, um, on it, can I just tear the side, um, porch down? Since that's one of the things y'all were saying, the, the porch is falling, so can I fall, just tear that porch down? Does it necessarily need it? It's just on the side. It's just like a
Yeah.
A little thing that nobody goes through.
So let me clarify real quick, because I don't know that, if y'all will look up at the letter that they receive ahead of it, what it does is it cites our ordinance and it lists the whole thing. So, um, it may not have peeling paint like we had a minute ago, but it may have this. So instead of picking and choosing what they may or may not be, uh, having, not in compliance with the ordinance, we just put the whole ordinance in there. So that might help clarify as to what she's referencing. It's in the letter.
Well, I had gotten a letter that said that, um, uh, we would have a meeting in October. And then this week I, all of a sudden got a letter saying it was gonna be today. So, and it takes like five days for a letter from here to get to my house. And I'm going, okay, so I had to hurry up and
So this is for two different properties that she's referencing. The first letter you got in October was for your property at eight eleven Northeast Street, and that's the one where the porch is falling off. And the windows are not secure and all of that. This is for, uh, four oh one North Arkansas where we have dilapidated structure. So you've received notices for both properties. This specific, uh, hearing is for, uh, the four oh one North Arkansas. And then, uh, it's listed again to talk about eight eleven Northeast on item number twenty-two. So just so you know It's, we already had that public hearing on item number twenty-two is where we're discussing how to take action on that now. So we had your public hearing in October.
Both of my letters said October, not
So the letter that you received on the four oh one North Arkansas says that today, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five is when your public hearing is?
Yes.
The letter for eight eleven
Before that, I got the, the letter saying October.
Yes, so we had a public hearing in October on your eight eleven Northeast. This is
No, it was for this October.
Of twenty twenty-four, yes. The most recent October. Yes.
Okay, you, there, there's not a letter for the upcoming October twenty twenty-five?
No, it's for October twenty twenty-four, we had the public hearing and you were sent a notice for eight eleven Northeast. This one that we're talking about right now is for four oh one North Arkansas.
Well, I didn't see the one for eight eleven northeast.
Okay.
That's why, that's why.
Yeah.
Otherwise I would have showed up. Because, because, um, my deal says it, it was for October and so I thought I had till October.
You've, you've got some mail or certified mail?
Our certified mail receipts, yeah.
Okay.
And so I, I think it was just a so here's a copy of the letter that was sent in October.
The copy of the letter of October was dated October one, twenty twenty-four, and it says that the public hearing was set for the seventeenth day of October of twenty twenty-four. And that was sent by certified mail with a receipt. I hate these receipts. This is, well, that's postmarked January the eighth of twenty twenty-five, but that's when you picked it up at the post office. You picked it up in January.
The, the one we're talking about now is on Arkansas Street.
It's four oh one Arkansas.
Four oh one Arkansas. All right, what, do you want something, I mean, what would you?
Okay, um, I can redo the roof on the backside. The front side, the roof has already been done on. But, um, the, what do you call those? Gables?
Yeah.
Gables. The gables, um, I have the windows for those. I just haven't got them put back in. And, um, there was a few boards in front, but, um, and then I noticed on the side, and somebody keeps taking my fence down. I don't know who keeps taking my fence down, but I will put it up and I've put for sale signs up in my yard and somebody keeps taking them. So, which I did that at first and, and I said, I've reported it that somebody keeps taking my for sale signs off both properties.
So are they both for sale?
Yes, they are both for sale.
That's just, your intention is just to sell them. You're not trying to repair them or live there or do anything, right? Just?
Well, it, uh, the four oh one, I can get the roof done on it and the, um, just fix my gables. And there's just three boards in the front there and which I have another door to put on the back. It's in the house, but I have a, I was going to put the door from the front to the back and then put the other one on the front. Because I have a door for it. It's a new door.
Lauren, when was this photo on our thing taken? In our present, in our packet?
Before the notice was sent. Like we, there was a picture at the time of the notice being sent.
Right. So is this the, the picture, is that the roof redone on it?
That's the current roof that's on it right now.
When was the roof redone? You said you, the roof was redone?
Uh, when was that roof done?
Roof's been done five or six years ago or more.
And that's a metal roof?
No.
No, it's shingles.
I can't, the picture is blurry, sorry.
Sorry.
It's composition. Yeah.
And you said you just have, you're just planning on putting windows in the, um, dormers, gables, whatever they're calling them up there?
Yeah, I have the original. I have the original windows that are to it. I just have to put, I've got to caulk them and put them back in on those. And then I've got to put, um, the surround on the gables.
The fence doesn't, unless it's, unless the fence is just laying there, I mean, a fence or no fence doesn't matter on dilapidated properties. It just looks, it, from the images and when you drive by, it looks like those dormers are rotting, like they could cave in at any moment. When you look at it, it looks like the old roots wa, the wood is rotted out up there. Usually when it plywood, it's not very waterproof. So I mean, the weather, the snow, the rain, that wood's going to find a way to start rotting. And then down like on the siding and stuff, it just looks like the siding is rotting away. I mean, you could potentially fix it and paint it, like you're saying, and tear down that side porch. But it just looks like it's rotting. And then the longer there's no one there, the more water, the more damage, water's going to find a way. And so that's usually why these end up on dilapidated properties. And I'm sorry that someone's taking your for sale sign. I'm sure it's kids. Kids will be kids. They're dumb. I mean, it is what it is. You know, they, small town, not a lot of entertainment. They're going to mess with stuff. Dumb kids do dumb things. But, uh, you know how it is. I'm sure we've, we've all been there. But, um, yeah, that's, I guess the reason I was asking is what your intentions are with it to sell it or move in and things like that. Because that goes a long way in the decision making process on it.
Yes. Um, I've had a, um, realtor, um, uh, if you look, there's a, well, you can't see it from the road. But behind the screen door is a, the box thing that she went in to show the house. And, um, the person that was interested in it was supposed to call me back today. To see if, uh, he was gonna buy it. Because he was gonna buy the other property with the other two houses on it, just for, he was going to tear the houses down, just have the property.
Was he going to tear this house down or just the other properties?
He was going to tear the other two property, uh, the other two houses down because of the, um, garage.
Yeah, there's one of them.
Yeah, there's a garage with the cement.
Slab.
Yeah, with the slab.
So on this one that we're talking about on Arkansas, does, do you have, do you have a plan? I mean, something with a deadline? I mean, we're, this has been this condition for a long time. And, uh, you know, I, I think, I don't think anybody's wanting to beat anybody up here tonight. But indefinite time periods and things like that, it just, it never ends, you know? If, unless you, well, I can, I can get this done in thirty days or I can get this done in sixty days, something like that. And I'm just, that's just my opinion. Anybody else?
I got an offer or an offer to make a motion and see if you are interested. Just try to get it sealed up. Like in this photo, that one dormer window's open up there. There's no plywood or anything in it. Get it sealed.
Okay, if I can put the windows back in?
That's fine too. Yeah, sealed, either way. Yeah, get it sealed to keep animals, weather and whatnot out of it. Um, and then we could potentially revisit it in three months, um, if you, if that's okay with you. And then see what kind of progress you've made on it, see if it's got any bites on selling it. Something to that extent before we actually condemn it or consider it completely dilapidated. Just let you clean it up a little bit, try to sell it. And then see if there's any bites in three months and then we can kind of revisit it. Does that work for you? Is that something you might be entertaining? I know Belton's a long way. I know it's a, it's like down by Wakefield, right?
If I can get the roof redone on it before three months, I mean, by the end of three months.
Yeah, it's okay. I mean, if you get it cleaned up and it looks fine, then it would, it'll be off our radar. I mean, in three months, if it looks good, then that's fine. You continue to try to sell it, continue to try to do it. But it's the, um, the, the appearance and the sealing it off. I mean, it's, it's just because when we drive by and you got like one dormer open.
Open to the air.
I mean, things like that, overgrown stuff to that extent, that's what puts it on the radar whenever our enforcement folks are driving around looking at these properties. So, uh, yeah, we.
And I don't know who keeps taking my fence down.
Yeah.
Because I've got, it, it's fenced in from one side and then another. And I'm going, okay, who keeps?
Is, is that acceptable, something like what Councilman Hendrix?
Yes, um, if, uh.
Because at the, at the end of ninety days, it's going to come back on the, on the agenda again and we'll be up here.
Yeah.
Doing the same thing, you know?
Okay, it, so three, three months?
Ninety days.
Yeah, ninety days, three months. If you make some progress on it, um, whether that's getting a contract to sell it or whatever it has to be. Uh, if something happens sooner, reach out to, um, Ms. Bush there, the Secretary of the City, call up here and ask them and let them know, uh, that something's happened. Because if you can sell it by the end of the month, by all means, go for it.
Okay, and the other properties, um, if, if it doesn't go through, um, how, how long do I, and how?
Are you talking about your separate property?
The other.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk to that later on. We're not trying to cut you off. Just, yeah, save that.
Yeah, save that.
Yeah. Then we'll talk about it here on item twenty-two, just a little bit further down. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Does somebody want to make a motion on that or have we?
I'll go ahead and just make the motion again that, uh, we're going to revisit this in, um, three months. Uh, try to get it sealed up, whether the windows in thirty days or less. Uh, is it so that way we can get it weather sealed?
I need to, to ask too. Um, it says, uh, broken, uh, broken window.
Well, like, like she said a minute ago, that description is just the description of what we call a dilapidated property. It's not talking about your property specifically. That's just all of the qualifications for dilapidated.
It's most likely the one dormer she's talking, it's talking about.
But yeah, if she's talking about a broken or open window, it's going to be that dormer up top. Because it's, you know what I mean? It's open to the environments, yeah.
I have one that's where somebody has broke my window, but there's a window on the inside that's not touched.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
All right.
Well, you know, the, whenever it's making houses or like playgrounds for hooligans, you know what I mean? That's just what they do. Um, but yeah, that's the motion I want to do, the, the three months revisit this. Um, hopefully we can get something going on it. And then thirty days or less, if you can get it sealed up to the elements, that'd be great.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Okay, let's move in right along. Uh, that's four oh one. Okay, three oh one North Donald. Okay, we're back to three oh one North Donald. Mr. Slate.
Like I said, I planned on moving the property, they're not property, the house. This weekend, I plan on, I talked to Lauren this morning and, uh, so this weekend, plan on coming out to, uh, trim up some of the trees and stuff and hopefully the neighbors, the ones I trimmed before, they don't rap again that I trimmed their trees, even though it's hanging on my property. I said I want to move the house to Red Springs, uh.
We're, we're timeframe, you don't know, you're not quite sure.
Well, I said, I, I can come on weekends and do it. I, I, I had, like I said, I was hoping to have, when I retire, I've got two, a couple of years and I can collect my Medicaid when I want to retire after I'm sixty-five. I'm sixty-three now. And, uh, I said, I've had the house for a few years. It's got a lot of new stuff in it. I said, I know the roof's bad, but I'm going to have to take the roof off anyhow to move it. It's not going to clear going down the road on one of the trucks. And I know that's expensive, but you know. So I'll show some work on the house and everything I have been, every time I find it broken into, I fix it where they can't get back in through the same place. I'll clean up the trees around it. Some of them I left them there because they're blocking the windows from people getting in them. And I hadn't sweated so much. I said that I've had stuff, the, it's harder to keep things up on it when people are constantly stealing from it. Like I said, this had got new doors, front and rear on it. And somebody has gone and stolen the storm door on the front. And I think the only reason the, the rear one hasn't, because it got damaged when they broke into the house. But it, when it was broken into, uh, it wasn't easy job because it's deadbolt and a regular lock. It wasn't just, like I said, the, the doors are newer doors and the door frames are new, completely done. And I've been, I've been constantly mowing it, keeping it mowed.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Lauren, is there any utilities on? No utilities.
I hadn't had utilities on the place. Uh, Rick Schumay came out a long time ago and pulled the electrical wire on it because he said, so I think the city said pull it. So from a pole to the meter box, the cable has been removed. I said, it's still, I haven't rewired the house yet. It didn't bother me because it's still got the old cloth wiring in it. And I didn't want to hook electricity up to that because it's, it's a wood house. It's going to burn. So it's got final siding all the way around on it, but it's got hail damage from a few years ago. All right, right now, like I said, this weekend, I plan on getting it more cleaned up than what it normally is. There's a few, couple of pear trees out there also. I didn't want to cut them down.
Well, you know, the neighbors might complain, but once the tree crosses over your property line, you're good to trim those limbs off. So, you know, they might get upset. You might mess up their pretty trees, but if it's on, it could damage your property. It's okay.
They're junk trees, but you know, so while they complained, I don't know, there's getting trimmed back and then they complained. So I've left them alone and just mowed around them.
The, um, the roof, I know you're saying it needs to be replaced in bad shape. Is there like visible holes in it or is it more?
Yeah, there's holes in it. It's, the, the rafters are good. It's just the, uh, it's an old cedar shingle style with, uh, asphalt roofing on top of it. So it's all, it's all coming down. I was just going to strip it on down and then when I get it moved and, uh, it's, it's, it's kind of pricey to move a house.
Yeah.
It's cheaper than building a house, but it's pricey to move a house.
That's what I was thinking.
It's difficult. Yes. It's, it's pricey and difficult.
Yeah, like I said, with the roof off of it, uh, because that is, uh, I think it's ten, ten foot ceilings in that house. So it's, it's pretty tall. I was going to have to take the, uh, the rafters down and everything where it's just like, looks like a flat roof. So they could be moved. Since it's not really that wide of a house, it's just a little long.
You think it's still going to be able to be movable?
Yeah, is the ceiling not caved in on it from being wet?
No. It's got holes in it, but it's not caved in.
I mean, the ceiling, the ceiling, not the roof, but?
Yeah, the ceiling's fine. It's, the ceiling is, uh, solid wood. It's not, uh.
So it's just, all it's getting is mold and mildew in it?
Little bit, uh, but no, it doesn't have, uh, sheet rock in it. It's not a sheet rock ceiling. It's a wood ceiling.
I think in a couple of years, it's probably going to be mowed and mildew and stuff growing in there, Ed.
Well.
Or you're going to probably take it all out anyway?
I'm going to re, redo, I want to redo it. It's a neat little old house. I mean, it's nineteen twenty. I said, I kept, I kept the insides sealed up from outside people's stuff. Like I said, I got, it's got new win, or the windows are from new, were new probably at two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And, uh, I said, some of the latches have been broken. They cracked the glass, forcing the windows open. But it's all on the joining house side. And, uh, I said, I've complained about it and stuff and it, nothing stopped.
You know, I think one of the thing, I'm, you know, I'm not a construction guy. Just, I'm just wondering how reasonable it is to, you know, you may have a really good plan, but to pick this house up, I can't think of the last house that's been moved from the country into town or from the town out into the country.
That's why it's pricey and most people don't do it, but I don't have a house out there in my property in Red Springs.
Yeah.
And to move this one there and reset it, everything is cheaper than having a house built.
Just like I say, it's.
I said, it's my retirement deal and, uh, but I, I said, y'all want it done before then.
Say again?
I said, it's my retirement plan, but y'all want it done before then.
Yeah, yeah. Does anyone have a suggestion or want to make a motion? We either need to give Mr. Slate a kind of an, I guess, an indefinite period of time or go ahead and?
Well, if he, if he cleaned the trees up around it and tried to get a roof put on it. I mean, I know it's a lot of, the holes in the roof was, was caught me concerned. That's an eyesore. Clean the trees up all the way around it, grub them out. Uh, the front porch look like it's pretty rotten.
That's, no, that's treated lumber. That's, no, that's treated lumber, used to be a couch sitting on there, but, uh, it got five finger discounted.
Is there a hole where varmints can get underneath the house here?
Uh, there is an access spot in the rocks. And that's the only thing I can think of.
There's, right in the front porch, the image we're looking at, like I said, was taken back when they sent this notice out, and it, uh, I don't know if you can, maybe you can see it on Lauren's or somewhere, but there, down at the front porch, there's like a chair and some trash in the front, and it looks like it's.
There's a hole right there, a hole, but yeah.
That's what we're looking at, we're looking. Yeah, I guess our main. Okay, if that's, if that's the case, well, it's fine, but I guess the main concern, like Lance saying, that we have is the holes in the roof, any access points to varmints, to critters, to something that's gonna, um, you know, nest up in there and cause more problems for our uh, animal control, law enforcement, the neighbors, the neighborhood, things like that. We've, we've been working real hard to get rid of the varmints in town, skunks, raccoons, things like that, made a lot of progress, but if we have houses that are, you know, vacant, dilapidated, it's just nest for them, you know what I mean? And we're not saying that your house is, I'm just.
Yes, it has, it's got a bunch of stuff in it, and.
Right.
And it's du, very dusty inside, but like I said, I wasn't planning on fixing it at that location.
So, I guess what we're saying, I guess the, the, what I would like, that I think, man, like, same thing is get it closed up. It's, I mean, if you can get it closed up, get the roof patched, or it, it doesn't have to be maybe a brand new roof, but if you can close up the roof, the house, what it is, and at least get it similar likeness, to where, and clean up the trees, make it look presentable, i- is really the main thing. I mean, if we drive by and we see holes in the roof, like there was one over by Pinman's, and it had a cactus growing out of the roof for a while, I mean, it was stuff like, you know, eventually something's gonna get in there, something start growing out of your roof.
Yeah, I got a cactus growing beside, but I don't want there, and I can't kill it.
They're hard to get rid of, but, uh, but yeah, things like that is what the main issue, this is why they come across our table, you know what I mean? And stuff like that, holes in the roof, windows busted out, um, the plywood is falling.
Windows are, they're.
Right, and that's.
I think two cracked windows last time I boarded them up.
And you're having trouble with vandalism, I mean, it's just a thought, might get you some gang cameras put up, up high, just take a picture every now and then, might catch a move they are. You know, if you really worried about it, people destroying your house, you know?
Yeah, it's all over town stuff like that happening, and, uh.
Well, do, so.
More likely on those vacant properties for people to mess with them, they, they don't see lights on, or people there, or anything, they're gonna mess with them. I, I hate to say it, it's just, it's not just seen where it's gonna be, you know, that's just their targets, at, at the end of the day.
Do y'all have a timeframe that y'all wanna put on that? Or does, I need, when you do, you should do a timeframe.
Once the roof closed up, then, then the structure closed up.
Just, I, I was, um.
Within, okay.
What do you got?
Uh, I'll make a motion, we're gonna do the ninety days on yours too. Um, and like Lance said, we'd like to see the trees all cleaned up around it, don't make it look like it's vacant, kinda make it look and, um, and, and if, and if some broken window happens, maybe try to fix it as soon as possible, or or maybe decide to board it up, so people won't break them if they keep doing it, but, but I'd li, I'd like to see some of that.
There's not, and it wasn't unbroken out, they, so they ripped the screens off, and forced the windows open and cracked the glass, and it says, so far there hasn't been any broken out glass, it's just cracked.
And, and just for you, the roof, I would do it just because it needs to be done, some cover holes up at least, go inside and put a whole plywood up in there. I'd hate to see all that's just getting ruined, it's over two years, I'm just, just for your sake.
But, well, are, are we saying if it, if the roof's not closed up, and it's, and it's not secured, that we're gonna see this again in how, within ninety days, is that ninety days? So, if, if, if the roof is not closed to the point of?
And the property cleaned up, and the trees.
The trees.
Try to maintain it.
Yes, if that's not done within ninety days, then we're back here discussing, going through it one more time, that's, is.
Is that a motion?
Okay, thank you, Billy, we got a second on that?
A second.
A second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gillespie, okay, that's where we're at. Let's move right along. All in favor, I thought we voted, all in favor say aye. Four zero. Okay. Three oh one Donald. Okay, two oh eight North Packet.
Okay, this is number page forty-six on your packet.
Yep.
Uh, the certified letter came back. For whatever reason, there's several different addresses for these people, and I found out after the certified letter came back, that it's in Brownwood now, so the tax office has Lubbock, we have Oregon Street, and there's another person that said, no, we send all their bills to Brownwood. So, I will need to resend their letters, I just got that information yesterday, uh, to try and get in contact with them. I do not think any of these letters got to them, because they've all come back.
So, do we need to table it, or?
Yeah, so I would just say, let me, um.
How long we need to table it?
Till next month, I will resend his notifications, and we can do it in April.
I'll make a motion, we table two oh eight North Packet till next.
Motion to table this till next month?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor say aye. Four zero.
I was, Scotty.
Scotty. Okay.
Three oh one.
Three oh one North Arkansas.
Okay. I have spoken with the property owner, that's on page forty, three oh one? Oh, I think I got your images wrong. Okay, well, the great thing about that image being wrong is that that house is gone, or it's eighty-five percent gone. Uh, the property owners came in, uh.
Just, just a minute, Lauren, three oh one North Arkansas is the one that we, uh.
That's Miss Slate.
Oh.
Yes, we dealt with.
I was thinking Donald, I'm sorry.
It says on our paperwork, three oh five North Arkansas.
No. I have three oh one North Arkansas is Tammy Estrada.
Says three oh five Tammy Estrada.
That's her mailing address, the property's located at three oh one.
That now, sorry.
So, yeah, the other property is four oh one, so three oh one is Tammy Estrada's, but the image that you've got in your packet is four oh one's image, so the image is wrong, however.
Okay, that's what I seen.
Sorry, the house at three oh one North Ark, saw is seventy-five percent gone. So, they are tearing it down themselves, um, they originally called and said, oh, there's, there's no way that we can get this done, and I told her, okay, you know, do your best, and um, you know, try to come up with a plan, and then in five days, it was halfway gone. So, that one's being remediated by the property owner.
Okay.
So, there's no, uh.
No, no action, be patient on that.
No action on that.
Okay, do we need a motion, or anything on that?
We would, no action.
Okay. Let's go to six oh one South Washington. Um, Mr. Holmes requested, he's back, he, he can say it himself.
Go ahead.
Uh, six months to see if you can sell it, or basically, is that?
Yes, that's, uh.
Yeah.
I had initially no intentions of trying to do anything to place, just removing the house, the property, but I have had interest in, uh, several people asking what my purchase options were.
Are you, are they, did they come in interested in buying the house or the property?
Both.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, I should.
That interest shown, I've kinda changed, thinking, well, that takes, take a little time, uh, I am employed, I work five days a week, and since we had a time change, and I have more lot after work, and, uh, there are no utilities turned on after address, uh, I don't intend to try to get any utilities unless I have to to get some dumpsters. Uh, I live right across the street, so I just thought maybe I could get the dumpsters on my, uh, account there where I live to, uh, not have to make just hundreds of trips to the dump ground, uh, afterward.
Talking about like, like a rollout, or like the, the small green ones?
Maybe just a dumpster, I don't, not sure exactly how much it would be. Uh, on the inside of the house, it's just, uh, a lot of household items that need to probably be trashed, because it's been empty for a while. And the roof is bad, there's several holes in the roof, I don't really tend to spend any money trying to repair the roof, if I'm gonna sell it.
Yeah.
Uh, but there is some ceiling damage inside that would need to be hauled off, and out of the house to, you know, get it in halfway presentable shape, so somebody can go in there and look at it, and see what they're dealing with.
See if there's some potential when they walk in there, okay, um.
Give some time to sell?
I think, I think I'm gonna kinda stick with the trend here, and give you ninety days, three months, to, um, kinda make some progress on it, and then we can revisit it. And then see if you're at that point where you're ready to present and sell still, if you're still gaining that interest, if not, then maybe we can look forward to, look towards other options.
Okay.
If that's okay.
About the, uh.
If, if, if you're making, you know, good progress, and there's still interest in selling, or you're at that point, we could potentially extend it at that time, like I said, we're just gonna revisit in three months, and then, uh, make that decision at that point. But being that you've came here and you're wanting to, there's might be some interest in it, we don't wanna just, you know, throw it in the trash automatically, let you try to make some money on it if you can.
It's sealed up, isn't it, it's other than the roof?
Uh, there is a window on the south side. I believe it's, has kinda collapsed down.
Might wanna get that boarded up.
Kinda my intention now, that somebody has shown some interest in, in purchasing property to, uh, you know, just kinda make it look a little more.
Yeah, just.
Keep it more.
Curb appeal.
I, I was thinking it was, I just couldn't remember for a reason.
Right, right.
Yeah, since you, yes.
Uh, would I have to, would I have to get, uh, utilities turned on to that property to be able to use the trash?
So, if you're wanting to get like the green rollouts, like to use that, you would have to have a utility account and everything to have a waste account, but if you wanted to go up and get the, um, rollout, or the big dumpsters that we put out there, you can rent those for like a weekend, I think, or?
So, the, um.
Dump truck.
That we have a dump truck that you can reserve for sixty-five dollars a day, or you can get it on Friday and have it sixty-five dollars for a weekend. We do, do pickup as well, it's thirty dollars a load. Um, like if you had limbs or household items, and we would just come by and pick those up for you, and take them to the transfer station, that's thirty dollars a load. Uh, we can't get the commercial dumpsters at residential locations, they won't pick them up. Um, but we have various options that we could work with you when it comes to debris removal.
Yeah, six, you said sixty-five dollars for the weekend, for a dump truck when it's available?
Yes, if you can get it on a Friday, you get a deal.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, all weekend. Anyone wanna make a motion on this?
You know, forget to clean up quick, so you can put your limbs outside and they'll haul them off free.
Yeah, that was the, my motion was the three months.
Okay, thank you, Scotty.
For sure.
Sorry, Scotty, Scotty made the motion of ninety days, and then revisited it, you know, I guess the fourth. Yeah, okay, we got a motion, a second to give. Land was the second, okay.
Okay.
Ninety days, we'll talk before then. Alright, thank you, C, thank you for coming.
All in favor.
Oh, all in favor say aye, did we all vote? Four zero.
Sorry. Thank you, I appreciate it. Billy, Billy's the one that usually does that, he's down there at the end. No, it is, I'm, I'm handicapped.
Okay.
I'm not much help.
No, Debbie, yes you are. Uh, eight oh one Northeast.
Okay, this property is owned by an estate, uh, or a tr, trust, um, out of Dallas, they are paying the taxes on it. I did send them a certified letter, I did not get the card back to say that anybody received it, so the letter went out, but I haven't had her receiving on it. My opinion is that we move forward with TCG, I think it's gonna be one of those properties that we're not gonna be able to do on our own.
Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, we move on with TCG.
Condemn it, or is it already, it's not condemned already?
No, it's condemnation, or.
Gotcha. We have a motion by Councilman Billy Hendricks.
A second.
And a second by Council Lady. Gillespie. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Passes four zero. Uh, okay, four oh two East Morris. Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that, um, you've been explained very well, cause this letter does not explain very well all the options that you have with the city. So, um, if you want to convey the property to the city, you can, which means you just sign that off, and we end up taking the, the property, cleaning it up, and then we put it up for bid, because we don't wanna keep the property. Um, you can, um, choose to not, and we go through the condemnation process, and then that means that we're gonna clean it up anyways, but we're gonna bill you for it, and then we'll put a lien on the property if the bill isn't done. So, if you're dead set on keeping that property, and, and we have to clean it up, there'll be a lien put on it. Um, or, or we'll send you a bill, and then you can either pay that out in the course of probably six months or less, we don't extend those too terribly far. Um, or you can do it yourself, and we have, uh, different contacts for local contractors that you could reach out to, to see if they would be willing to tear it down for you. So, those are your options, conveyance to the city, tearing it down yourself with a local contractor, or having us do it, and go through that process and, and bill you for it. We tend to be more expensive than the local contractors. So, that being said, so, just so he understands his options.
Guess my best option would be to convey it to the city.
Yeah, we, we had somebody do that the other day, and it.
I do have another property that goes along with it, it's.
I was gonna ask, sorry, Lauren, is that?
I do have another property that goes along with it, I just, is just adjacent to this property, I don't wanna include that with it.
No, no.
Are they, uh, yeah, we had to just make sure that they're, um.
I think it's probably two separate deeds, right?
It's one deed.
It's all on one deed?
Just slightly look at the.
Yeah, it's just two. Two properties.
Yeah, we, we wanna make sure that it's only this four oh two East Morris property.
Right.
We'd need to agree on the property lines and that kinda thing.
So, that might require a survey, and that would be on you to survey that property, so at, unless the city decides that you wanna eat the survey cost, and.
Yeah, yeah, uh, let's do this, what, what about, uh, at this point, subject to a survey, or determining if, if we can determine, if there is a dividing line between the two properties, uh, subject to determining where the line's gonna be, you would agree to deed it to the city and be done with that property?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to, to do that, if that's, I didn't say that very well, but?
No, I'm looking right now to see if it's two properties.
Mr. Johnson. Is it this property here?
In the back, so there's the larger home, and then this property back here.
Four oh two's in the middle of the block, but.
I know, well, and it's not a very. So, there's the larger structure, and then it's showing smaller structure.
Part of the roof's gone. East side of it.
Okay, those, it looks like there are two different lots.
Two different.
So, we could use the conveyance for this property to.
Okay.
Okay, and that wouldn't affect that property?
I'm not sure if they use, if they're using that garage or not.
Okay.
It, it doesn't look like it.
It seems like it's inside those property lines, so if we did conveyance, it would be for that lot, and we would clean that whole thing up, but it wouldn't affect this one.
Okay.
Yeah, it would just be the house and that garage in the back, yeah, we just.
Uh, Lauren will, uh, prepare some paperwork for you, it will not be the deed, we'll, we'll get all that figured out, but it's just that you're agreeing to convey the property
Okay.
to the city, and that we'll take responsibility for. Subject. Subject to, uh, we get the title checked on that, to be sure that we're getting clear title on that too.
Do your owner's signature, yeah, you'll sign your name, and sign in here. And then let me get your phone number before you go.
Okay, and you've got contact information for this gentleman, so that y'all can communicate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's move on. Beg your pardon? Who would like to make that motion?
Make a motion when we continue in conveyance.
We have a motion by Councilman Wind, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Scotty Hendricks. All in favor say aye. It passes four zero. Okay. Four oh two East Morris, uh, nine oh seven. North Maine.
With the property owner, I'm sorry, on three twelve, um. With the property owner, I'm sorry, on three twelve, um, uh, she requested six months. She is calling local contractors. She had interest in purchasing the property. It's uh, uh, Ms. Linda Rogers. The property hasn't had utilities on it since she moved. And I can't remember when she told me. It was the early two thousands, so it's been vacant for a period of time. But um, she said that she was gonna talk with her kids and try to get all that situated. So, that was the discussion that I had with her on three twelve.
You explained the possibility of conveying the property?
Yes, I did. But she said that she had some people that had approached her for purchase, and she wanted to look into that first.
Okay. Do some, we wanna stay with this six months? Does somebody wanna go with the ninety days or?
I think we stick with the three months.
Okay. Yeah. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay.
That uh, we give them ninety day, ninety days to uh, figure out what they're gonna do with it.
Revisit.
Okay. All in, uh, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Skyler Hendricks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Four zero.
Was that, is that commercial property?
It is, uh, it is zone commercially.
Yeah.
It's zone commercial?
It's not a house.
It is a house.
It is a house, yeah.
It's right next door to the sauna.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Oh, yeah, okay, nevermind, that's, yeah.
All right, and that is.
Okay. Number nineteen, discuss, consider, and take action regarding going out for bids concerning the Seymour Speedway Skate Park for concrete and accessories.
So, um, this is on page fifty-eight, starting in fifty-eight. I did two bid options because one seemed very lengthy and the other one seemed very to the point, and I'm hoping that y'all can give me some direction if you choose for me to go out for bids, which I need to begin the process. Um, packet one is pretty short. It's a single, it's a two-page with an image. And then packet two has a lot more jargon in it, and y'all could give me some direction of which packet you would prefer me to use if you will allow me to start going out for bids.
I mean, package one looks good to me. Like you said, it's short, sweet, but it says everything needs to have in there.
Put plenty of detail in it to protect ourselves. Someone like to make a motion on that? Or is it, or entertain more discussion if you want more discussion?
I make a motion that you go out for bids on packet one, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to allow? Uh, is wish to go out for bids on this using packet number one. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Four zero. Okay. Um, number one, discuss, consider, and take action concerning gaming rooms inside the city limits. Uh, we've had this a couple of times on the agenda, and uh, I think we need to.
So, this ginormous packet is the ordinance provided. It was also sent to you electronically, but it's on the other download, so. Um, I have highlighted in there where it talks about um, cost associated. This was taken from Denver City, uh, Texas, and had, was the original that provided for you in January.
Have you, uh, y'all talked to them since they came? Have they still been in communication, like, planning and?
They were, they were here, but they left.
Yeah.
He was here, but they're, had their child with them, so I think they decided to exit.
Okay. Since of, just, okay.
I've, I've spoken with him a couple of times and just wondering if anything was going on, you know.
Yeah, I just was wondering if there's any progress, like if they located any digital areas or anything.
They're waiting for the city to move forward on whether we even wanna do this. And then at that point, I think they would be looking at the ordinance to see if they can operate under this type of ordinance, you know.
With my discussion with Sawyer, his opinion hasn't changed.
He's, the chief is, as I recall, he's skeptical on some of the legalities of the things. But they're operating in Haskell and uh, various places, so.
Yeah, and I know I talked to the uh, city administrator from Bridgeport uh, via email, and, and she was very skeptical about it. They have one, they were completely rewrite, rewriting their ordinance and uh, were just not happy with um, I, I guess the O and it brings to the community overall. It, it was interesting, the city administrator from Stanford, he even know what the building was, uh, and then um, I didn't, I reached out to Haskell, but they never responded, so.
The city didn't respond?
Haskell did not respond.
So, you don't know if they have an ordinance or anything similar to this?
I spoke to the city manager and he was, you know, he wasn't negative, you know, and uh, but we didn't get into ordinances and, you know, that kinda thing. One, they had one outside the city limits, one inside the city limits, so. In Haskell. So.
I mean, I know that um, like you're kind of, some people are worried about the image or whatever it may portray, whatever, but uh, I, the way I thought about it, and I think um, if they want it here, they're gonna find somewhere. If not, they're gonna put it in Monday or Omni or somewhere else. They'll keep trying to move it around somewhere else, is what I think of. And uh, I would just hate to see us miss an opportunity to get a little extra, you know, the commercial business that's gonna pay utilities and maybe put some revenue back in town. Some people might come in from outskirts into town and they don't serve food or alcohol, so they might go to the restaurants or bars here and continue to add revenue into the community and add some business, stir up some business. That's why I kinda don't mind it as long as it's regulated properly. And I read through this, I mean, it's legal, you know, as long as they follow the rules. So, that's why it's kinda hard to not agree with it, you know what I mean?
So, on the business side of it, the only concern that it brings up in my mind is if it, if the community is not as um, excited about its presence and it ruins a business area to where now people won't go in business next door to it or across the street or something, because it doesn't give the appeal that a business district may have. Now, it, the other thing, this ordinance doesn't really reflect, and I think we need to, if you pass it or, and, and allow them, you need to include a zoning, is that it be in a B two. That way you're not in your downtown B one areas. But because we don't have gaming rooms, I mean, it would fall kind of under amusement, which we could do that, we could consider that in zoning. But that's my only economic development concern is that uh, it, it could potentially dissuade other people from putting businesses in next door to it.
Have we thought about uh, doing like a, a poll or survey for the community to see what their opinion is on?
We've had three public hearings.
That's a, you know what I'm talking about, nobody.
Nobody shows up and says anything.
I tell you, I'm.
You know, it's not a bad idea. If you could put one of those on the city of Seymour Facebook.
Yeah.
Or on uh, the rents of Seymour, just to run and see what uh, and how our community feels. It's not a bad idea.
That's a, that's, I know the city council is great. I love it. I mean, I'm, obviously I'm on it. I think it's an asset for, we have to have it, you know what I mean? Public hearings are great. People see it, forget it, move on. They don't, if it doesn't have something directly attained to them, they're not gonna show up. It, it stinks, don't get me wrong. But uh, they do look at Facebook every day and every night, you know what I mean? We're all, if you have Facebook, you're probably looking at it every night at some point. Not to be bland, I know. But uh, uh, still, I mean, we can put a, potentially a poll on there and see what the community thinks, if that's a concern, I mean.
So, you wanna make a motion?
I wanna go say something.
Well, so, let me ask a question right quick. Are we doing this subject to, to this ordinance, operating with this ordinance? Or is this just a sample?
Well, at the last meeting, when, when I went back and listened to the recording, just to make sure we fulfilled the wishes of our council, and y'all said to bring y'all forward an ordinance. And so, you know, we found one that we felt was um, more restrictive, which I think we need to do if we're gonna do something like this. I think we need to be very careful about how to twirl out and making sure that we were clear on what our expectations are as, as a council. Uh, so, that's what we've done. So, y'all could either, you know, table that and then go uh, for the poll or opinion poll. Y'all can pass this with modifications, or y'all can table it, y'all can, whatever y'all want.
Okay, I, is it, maybe I'm not understanding. Is it just geared towards a certain age group? Is it from uh, say twenty-one to sixty, seventy, eighty? Oh, well, I can't, I can't understand. Anyway, what I'm saying is, I know that there's been people that have tried to get together to do um, like bingo nuts and all these other game nuts and stuff. People aren't interested. A lot of people aren't.
So, this one specifically?
That bingo, other, like, say elderly people. I'm not talking about that bingo, but I mean, like, for certain stage-specific groups. Like, you know, and they try to have bingo nuts for the elderly people.
At the senior citizens building or something like that.
Think about, these people don't have money to, I mean, if I'm gonna go and gamble and gamble my money for a fifty-dollar gift card, I'm not gonna spend two hundred dollars gambling to get fifty-dollar gift cards.
You go to the casino?
I go to the casino, yeah.
Three, four, I bet you put a couple hundred bucks in for nothing sometimes.
No, I, I don't, no, so really. Cause I'm going to a jackpot party.
Oh.
This ordinance specifically says twenty-one in it, in this ordinance.
Where'd you say the ordinance was from?
Denver City, Texas.
And I'm sorry, I don't have a glasses, so I can't.
I'm sorry?
What size is Denver City?
I don't know.
It is, okay, just curious.
I think, I think the, the, the idea that they're getting like, well, Haskell's a little bit further away than we are, I think, to casinos. But uh, I mean, we're still pretty far, and once you get to a certain age point, uh, some people don't want their grandmas driving over to the lot.
Yeah, but a lot of grandmas don't want to go and do that either, but I don't know.
If I go to the casino, it looks like a senior citizen.
That's fine, take a poll, I'm telling you. I, and I may be wrong, but I'm, I, they can go just right out the edge of town and just put it up or.
That's what I'm saying. If we put it down, they're gonna go right outside of the.
And then I was telling him the other day, then you lose your, that's no electricity coming from, no income coming from, nothing.
But that don't mean anybody would go out there and do it.
I'm not saying.
But, but even if nobody, even if nobody goes to this place, they still are gonna pay utilities to us, and they're still gonna pay all these.
But they're not gonna stay open very long either.
I mean, we get a little surge of income, then it closes, well, I mean, oh, that's not, I mean, if it, if it opens or closes.
But then you think about all the paperwork and all the research and the, the ordinances, all the work that.
We already did that.
I'm just saying, I'm.
I'm not gonna argue with y'all, but I tell you one thing, they must do something good, or they would be putting them up.
Yeah.
And every time you go buy ones in Haskell or pack.
There's several out in east Texas, and every little small town you drive through, they're in east Texas. I mean, I drive past them all the time. There's some in Abilene, I mean.
True, and I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just throwing stuff out there, and it's like, okay, so if, if Texas uh, if Texas passes gambling in Texas, so are they gonna be able to step right in and put a casino there ready?
They'll have to do ordinances again for a casino, cause we, they'll have to either put out.
Yeah.
That's a different thing.
So, this one's written specifically for the five-dollar deal, so it's, it's written for a game room. The casinos wouldn't fit in there.
Right, yeah.
But I will say that this is a much more restrictive ordinance. Though, what the people in Haskell, they're not having to pay these permit fees and things like that. So, if you want one of these.
You're gonna have to pay for it.
You're not going to want to include those fees, because they won't make any money if you're charging them thirteen grand a year in permits, which is what this could end up to be when you have so many machines in there.
Well, that's why I'm saying this ordinance right here, now you're gonna come at all, cause they're, they're not gonna make any money paying us all the fees.
Exactly. But this is the, it's much easier to take away from something than it is to add to something when you're not familiar with it.
No.
So, this is a very restrictive ordinance. We could take things away from it a lot easier, if that's what you decide to do.
What, what do you think about doing the, you know, Facebook, doing the, doing the poll, doing it for, I don't know, pick a, pick a period of time, ten days, thirty days, whatever it is, and uh, come back next month? And do, do, or do we wanna less restrict? I mean, I guess it would depend on what, how the poll comes back and.
Has the uh, chamber, has they talked, Chamber Commerce, they talked about this or anything, the business owner? I mean, I mean, cause it's, you're talking about other business owners that may be negative on it, have they?
I was just thinking, we don't have a lot of places to put in businesses anyways.
Right, well, that's what I mean, but if.
So, if I am looking to put in a bakery and a coffee shop and something that's real touristy and kitschy, but the only place I have to go into is the eight, next door to the eight-liner, that might not be good for my business. And now I can't put that kitschy place in, because I don't have anything left except for what's next to the eight-liner place.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm saying, is that it could be detrimental to the business issue, unless we made it very specific with zoning and said, this is where you can be, and this is where you can be only, and then it wouldn't negatively affect.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that's, that's kinda where I'm at. Zoning is, I, I worked in zoning, it helps prevent those issues most of the time. Cause I don't, I read through this, I didn't like fine tune code. Does it have like liquor store type zoning, where it has to be a certain distance from a church and stuff, just like regular? So, that obviously beneficial. I think I like the, the poll option, cause this, if you're, if you got like business owners or citizens that think this is gonna be terrible and it looks really bad from that viewpoint, then yeah, it's, you know, it is what it is. If we put a super restrictive one in like this, if they still wanna come to Seymour, even with this, they're gonna go right on the outskirts and avoid the thirteen thousand dollars worth of fines. So, we gotta find a middle ground. If the community thinks it's gonna be great, and they really want it, they love it, and the business owners don't care, and they love it and they want it, then you know, let's knock this down a little bit and make it more inviting, and see if we can get some money out of it, you know what I mean? Bring some revenue, bring some people in town. Um, but away from, like, the main, like, away from our main street, like, we're not down Washington, like, we're, we're the dang museums at, and we're all, we're foot traffic. We want downtown. It's not a downtown thing for me, you know what I mean? It's more of a liquor store on the edge of town kinda thing for me, is, in my opinion.
You wanna form a, form a motion?
Yeah, I'll try to form a motion out of that jumbled, run-on sentence I just said. Uh, I think I motion that we um, don't adopt this uh, ordinance at this time uh, in lieu of getting a public opinion, and maybe um, sending kind of an opinion survey over to the Chamber Commerce as well. Like, to see if they wanna talk to business owners that are members of the Chamber, uh, and just kinda get a um, more consensus in the community on what they think about this.
You got that, Lauren?
She's got it, she's got it better than I can say it.
Oh, man, that's a good, you did it good. Got a second, a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, thank you. Uh. Okay, let's see here, we've got uh, number twenty-one, discuss, consider, and take action regarding going out for bids concerning the daily maintenance of the, of the future brush pile located at Seymour Transfer Station. This is an effort to uh, save money and uh, not get bogged down with a lot of tree limbs and stuff that we've got now, a lot of city time spent chipping and disposing of the uh, the limbs that build up out there. Dr. Blazer, you've got more on that?
Yeah, uh, so uh, essentially, uh, we take brush out of the uh, transfer station, the brush pile's getting huge. And uh, so, in the near future, uh, we are going to have to chip the brush pile, but um, Ronnie had a great idea, uh, he's kind of innovator as well. Uh, we thought he might to look at somebody locally or somebody that might wanna come in there and uh, come up with another option to um, get rid of the brush pile more efficiently, and then, once that's done, then come in there and find maybe a, a innovative, more inexpensive way for us to maintain the brush pile daily. So, uh, we're just gonna open it up and uh, just to see what kinda bids that uh, we might get on dealing with the current brush pile, and then moving forward, uh, to see if there's any, uh, again, proposals of how we can, might do this more cost-effectively.
Okay, so this could, this could involve chipping it, burning it, hauling it away, whatever people come up with.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So, y'all are just gonna put bids out to, if somebody wants to take care of the brush pile?
Well, we're just gonna ask for proposals on what they would like to do to um, get rid of the current brush pile, and then maybe they'd want to come in and take care of the, the brush piles, you know, continues to build up.
Just to see what we get.
That's fine, I mean.
Does anybody wanna make a motion on that, that we?
Make a motion that we, uh, grab for grants to see what can, on the brush pile thing.
Number, that's number twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Who, who made the second? Skyler Hendricks. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? It's four zero. Number twenty-two, discuss, consider, and take action regarding activating Texas Communities Group to begin the condemnation process for two oh five West McLean and eight eleven northeast. the condemnation process for two oh five West McLean and eight eleven northeast. These, have, have we had hearings on these before?
Yes, we have, and actually, uh, Ms. Slate's here, she can, um, talk on the eight eleven. The two oh five, um, is actually, I'm thinking it's supposed to be two fifteen, two oh five west. Oh, I should have it in my book, hold on. So, um, why don't we go ahead and let her discuss eight eleven with you for just a minute, and I'll get the two oh five information.
You own this house at eight eleven, right? Okay, go ahead.
I owe both, uh, uh, it's two lots together, so I own both of them. I really didn't want them, but the judge gave them to me in the divorce. So, um, if, like I said, I have somebody that's interested in it, so if it falls through, can you give me three months, and if I can't find somebody to buy it, then I'll turn it over to the city.
Okay.
I have no problem.
All right.
Uh, the only thing is, um, it had the special warranty deed thing, and I cannot find them.
It's, it's, it should be recorded in the courthouse, the, the, the original?
Well, it's after the divorce, because it had to be split.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Do you think it was recorded in the courthouse?
I hope, hope that the lawyer sent it to you.
Yeah.
You had to have it activated.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, if not, I, I bet you could get another one. I mean, it'd have to be a corrective type deed, but let's do this, uh, now, are we talking ninety days to attempt to sell the house? If it doesn't, nothing's going on in ninety days, you would agree to convey it subject to having the correct deed and all that stuff? Somebody wanna make a motion similar to that?
The way I understood, so I have eight oh seven is the house next door. So I have eight, as eight eleven and eight oh seven, so are you combining those two properties in conveyance? I just wanna make sure that that's said and stated.
All right, let's, we need to get that in the motion that would somebody make that, that eight eleven and eight oh seven? I make a motion that we, uh, give Ms. Slate ninety days on properties eight oh seven and eight eleven northeast Street, and within those ninety days, if she doesn't get anything done, then she's gonna convey it over to the city, mu- with a deed.
And my name is Miss Slate.
Sorry. That's how it's listed at the tax office still.
Tell us your last name.
Beachley.
Beachley, okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, Ms. Beachley.
I second.
All right, we got it attended to. Thank you very much.
Okay, Billy, did you do the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
You got a second?
Hold on.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on, we've got, we've got two properties on this one, so I have a motion from Billy to do this, add a second from Debbie? Okay. The other one is two oh five West McLean. Okay, two oh five.
We're getting voted on the first.
Well, it's all one, uh, it's all one action. Uh, eight eleven northeast is the one that Ms. Beachley owns, and she's agreed along with eight oh seven northeast to convey those in the, um, uh, event that they do not sell in the next ninety days. It's right next door. Um, i- if you drive over there, it's almost like eight eleven's on the corner, and then there's a, a metal barn in between, and then there's a white stucco house at eight oh seven. Are you seeing what I'm, what I remember?
Where the metal barn is.
Yeah, it's two properties, three structures. Okay, on two oh five West McLean, it's all in the same action item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
So two oh five is owned by a gentleman named Curtis Thomas. He lives in Bowie. He has been, uh, attempted to be notified several times. We've had things come back. I've tried to find him on Facebook. I've done everything, so my suggestion is that we move forward with TCG and condemnation processes on two oh five. So Billy, if you would just add to your motion.
Then we move with the condemnation properties on, uh, two oh five West McLean.
I'll, I'll second it too.
Thank you. That's all I needed.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Discuss, consider, and take action on easement request for Brent Solot, So Solid concerning lots one through six and lots nineteen through twenty-four in block three in the original town of Seymour, AKA two oh one South Main, and I think you gave us some paperwork on that.
Yes, it's got some yellow rectangles on it.
Yeah.
This is gonna be just an informational deal. I didn't get the M O C back fast enough. Carrie had sent it to me, and, uh, I'll be honest, back in like the middle of February, and I just got busy and I dropped the ball on it. Um, the yellow areas on this sheet are where alleys are, but of course they're not being used, so I've sent an M O C out to the departments to locate sewer, water, electric, and see if there's any reason why we would not close those alleys. The other issue is that Ryman, which is the north face, north street, right? It's, it's a, I would say it is a, uh, uh, what do you call it? A, a, a determined street, right? There's a curb and all this other stuff. Well, the survey's all janky, and it says that part of that pipe fence and some of that storage is in the middle of our road. I would say that we should do an easement with the understanding that road's not gonna move twenty feet in, it's gonna stay where it is, and that the pipe fence and any storage buildings located on what would be Ryman Street could be rebuilt or repaired in the event that they were damaged. However, when you go over to East Street, which is the east facing side of that property, that those buildings are well into the East Street easement area. So my suggestion on that would be to go ahead and grant the easement with the understanding that if any property was damaged, removed, or needed repair, that it could not be put back inside that easement area and had to be placed inside the actual property lines. I do not have that ordinance for you, because like I said, we just didn't get the, the information back from all the departments quick enough, but this way, when you look at it in April, you know exactly what we're talking about and what the suggestion is.
So we just need to table this?
Yes, I hope to have it to you, but I just didn't.
Okay, we need a motion to table this. I'll make a motion, we table this until next month. We have a motion, a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Who, who? All right, who made the second?
Debbie.
Debbie, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see here, moving right along. We've got a, number twenty-four, discuss, consider, and select administration project delivery service provider to complete application preparation, project implementation for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Main Street Program administered and funded by the Texas Department of Agriculture with Resolution fifteen eighty-five. We have to do this.
Yeah, so we went out for bids, and so, um, we actually only got one bid, but it was who, um, has been working with the city of Seymour since I've been here. Uh, and, uh, they've done a great job, and, uh, we have a representative here, uh, tonight, if y'all like to ask her any questions, but, uh, Grant Works is, uh, who we would, uh, recommend the council adopt the resolution in support of Grant Works, doing our administrative services for the C D B G Downtown Revitalization Grant.
Okay, I just wanna give, uh, Councilman Lynn, just a second, that way we'll have a full compliment here, spending, it's gone a little longer. Uh, we're discussing, uh, Grant Works has submitted a bid to, uh,
administrative work for the C D B G Downtown Revitalization Grant, and they have served us and served us well over the last, uh, at least for the last four years since I've been here.
Right, we have to do this before we can get a grant, correct?
Correct, because they're gonna help us move forward, uh, this.
We've done this before. Okay. Uh, we have any, anybody, anyone have a question for Grant Works out here, or, uh, do we wanna make a motion to do this?
I'll make the motion to go ahead and accept the, we're accepting the bid, right?
Yeah, to adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution for that.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion to adopt the Resolution fifteen eighty-five from Councilman Skylar Hendricks. We have a second from Councilman Lynn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? We're good? Number twenty-five, moving right along, discuss, consider, and elect select engineering architectural surveying service providers to complete project im- implementation for the city of Seymour's Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Main Street Program funding. This is for just what it said, engineering, architectural, we got one bid on that, is that correct?
Yes, which is Jacob Martin, who again, we worked with now all the last, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and they do a great job for the city of Seymour, so that's who we'd recommend at this time to adopt the resolution in support of Jacob Martin.
Okay, do we have a motion to on this, uh, number, number twenty-five?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the Jacob, uh, I can't think of her name right now. Engineering for Resolution fifteen eighty-six?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Councilwoman Gillespie, all in favor, say aye?
Uh.
All opposed? No? It's four zero. Number twenty-six, discuss, consider, and take action concerning a dinosaur statue placement in the parking lot of the police station encouraging tourism and provided wholly, by provided, we mean money, for this project wholly by A E S Global Energy. And there's a, I think we've got pictures of this.
Yes, you'll have to share, because it printed front and back. I didn't mean it for that to happen, so I only ended up with so many up there, but, um, so uh, Mayor and I met with A E S back in November of last year, and as a joke, I popped off and said that I wanted a twenty-foot dinosaur, and A E S said us too, and then here we are, and they're willing to pay for us to have a fourteen and a half foot long dinosaur. Um, it's, it's five foot tall. I've gotten with Patrick Kenezic to manufacture the metal stage that it will sit on, so it would elevate it to seven foot tall. The ring around the base would be sixteen feet. The idea is that we wanna discourage as much as we can touching or climbing or anything on it, um. The reason why we're requesting to place it in the police station parking lot is because we really wanna use that Washington corner there as a way to direct traffic downtown, because that's where our dinosaur museum is, and that's where our, where our downtown is. Um, otherwise, we would have to go to the hospital and ask them to put it in their daycare parking lot. So, you know, there's, there's not too many places to turn and go to really give you a gateway into that downtown area.
What are y'all gonna do with the Panthers thing that's there right there?
So, back over here in the, in this little part of the police station, we're talking about putting it over there and cleaning that up and fixing that wall and adding some plants and stuff, so it would sit back there.
Cool.
And add some value to the police station.
Yeah, I think it would look good. I bet it would look good.
Um, I was, uh, instructed to say that the A, that the A E S is the, the energy company that's working with Invenergy out there on the wind farm, that's, that's where they're at.
Yes, yes.
And that the Invenergy, um, I don't know what they got with you guys, but they're supposed to be putting in money for the dog park as well, and then the fire department and the P T O, so they're all out there trying to support Seymour, and I was just
Sure.
told by a representative I found, I don't know who it was.
Some random representative of interregime, yeah.
Mentioned that, that all the, that everybody out there is trying to make sure they're part of the community.
So, uh, I, we're requesting your approval, we need to move on this quickly. Our idea is to have this placed, um, by the time they have Paleo Fest the first week of June, so we're having to move on it pretty quick, and it's gonna, I think will be, it'll be a surprise if we can get it done that fast. I think that's a short window, but if we can get it done, great. If not, if it happens in July, it's still a one, wonderful addition to our community, and it starts to move us towards that tourism that we really wanna focus on to drive people into our community. Our little tourism task force is getting put together, and we've got us a, a SWOT analysis to look at, so we're getting there. It just so happened that this opportunity came around and we just wanted to grab a hold of it and move with it. So if council's okay with placement, we will move the flagpoles. So the idea is take the flagpoles out and then put the flagpoles back in. Um, so they, uh, because it's going to be sixteen and a half, seventeen foot roundish, so it's gonna cut into that parking lot, you know.
We'd reset the flagpole, if that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, and there would be solar lots put in there as well, um, we could prob, there is electrical there now, but if we didn't wanna have to mess with it too much, there's great solar options now.
Do you have a motion on the dinosaur statue?
Yeah, I love this idea. I make a motion, we, we try to get it done as soon as possible.
I second.
Have a second, thank you. Councilwoman Gillespie, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same? Okay, uh, executive session. Uh, I hate to ask everybody to leave this large crowd here, but you can, you, you wanna roll around, you can come back after it's over.
C T.
C, C T said, I just woke up, sorry.
Did you enjoy the meeting, C T?